Good evening and thank you all of you for being here tonight. I'm pleased that we have Pastor Byron Morgan with Mountain View Church who's here with us to provide our invocation. That will be followed by the pledge, which will be brought by Officer Elijah Barnett of the K-9 unit. Thank you for being here. For all of you who are willing and able, please stand for our invocation and pledge.
Let us pray. Our loving heavenly Father, first let me just thank you on behalf of everyone who's here tonight. Thank you for your abundant blessings, thank you for life itself, for measure of health. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work and for the honor of bearing appropriate responsibilities. Thank you for your, for loving us, even out of your boundless and gracious nature. And heavenly Father, in this context tonight, I want to thank you for the divine institution of human government. And since you have established those very authorities to promote peace and order and justice, I want to pray for each of our commissioners assembled tonight, that you would grant them first wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues of our times. I pray that you would grant them welfare and compassion for the needs of our county, the people of our county. Ask that you give them a keen sense of justice and righteousness and truths. And ask that you give them the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement. And I pray for personal peace for each of them and for the joy in their task. And to that end, I pray for the agenda that is set before them tonight. I pray that you would give each commissioner a real assurance as to what would please you. And please give them the wisdom to determine what is best for those of our community. And I pray this in the matchless name of Jesus. Amen. If you would please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Pastor for that invocation and Officer Barnett for leading us in the pledge. Our meeting is now officially called to order. We have four presentations are our agenda this evening. The first presentation is to present a proclamation to our senior citizens who are here today as part of our annual Senior Citizen Day Honoree Program. So those of you who are here, I believe you're being led by Ms. June Van Brackel and the Senior Citizen Council. Please feel free to join us up front. In fact, Commissioners, if you can join in participating in this proclamation, we can all participate in honoring our seniors who are here tonight. Thank you.
Okay, I will provide a few words to introduce all of our honorees and then we have individual proclamations for those who are here tonight. And we'll have each of the Commissioners helping presenting the proclamations. National Senior Citizens Day is celebrated August of every year to let older adults know how much we care about them and to highlight their accomplishments. In 1988, President Ronald Reagan signed Proclamation 5847 and marked this as a day to raise awareness about the issues affecting senior citizens and their quality of life. We, the Cobb County Board of Commissioners, together with the Senior Citizen Council of Cobb County, are using this day to support, honor, and show appreciation to our seniors and highlight their achievement in our county. Although we are late to recognize the seniors this year, it certainly does not lessen the significance of their achievements. Many older Americans are a wonderful example of responsibility, resourcefulness, and determination. I would like to take this opportunity to encourage all of our residents to do their part, especially during the upcoming holiday season. You can spend time with a senior, get to know them, visit them in a nursing home, volunteer to read to a senior, volunteer at our Senior Services Center, among other activities. I want to take this time to thank all of our seniors for all you have done, for all that you do, and for all that you are. With that, we are going to recognize the seniors who are here today individually by presenting their proclamation. And Commissioner Gamble has our first proclamation.
Ramona Coleman. Ramona came to the Cobb Wellness Center as a valued volunteer after working in many areas. She worked for the federal government in furniture retail and resale as a flight attendant and in car auctions. After retirement, she helped out substituting at a preschool working with two and three-year-old children. Thank you. Ella Dockery Strong. She's been a valued volunteer with Acworth's Horizon League since 2014. The Horizon League provides children and adults with developmental, physical, and social disabilities the opportunity to participate in athletic and social events. Thank you.
Shirley Hamilton. How are you tonight? Shirley Hamilton has spent her lifetime working on behalf of the community and helping others to improve their situation. As a licensed social worker and mental health therapist, she worked for a federal organization that helped women in the workforce. Shirley also worked in Alaska assisting five tribes to combat alcoholism while running a private practice.
Thank you Shirley. Oh, you stay up here.
Jerry Houston. Come on down.
Hi there sir. Jerry Houston has done outstanding work in the community through his volunteer work in several organizations and has served as deacon at New Hope Baptist Church. Jerry is actively involved in community outreach program and is a charter member chair emeritus and board member of the Powder Springs Community Task Force.
Dick McCoy.
Good evening. Dick McCoy helps out at the Tim D Lee Senior Center Monday through Friday. He helps lead tours and is always engaging with new seniors who come to the center and encouraging them to jump in and participate. He also wows people with his card tricks and he also loves reading and storytelling. Thank you.
Maggie McGarrett. Maggie has been serving as a valued board member for Keep Smyrna Beautiful for more than six years. During her tenure, she has fully committed herself to the organization. Her dedication and efforts have helped to make Smyrna clean, green, and beautiful. Thank you.
James Reed Williams. Good evening. Yay, I got one. I think Dick is too. Whereas James Reed Williams has been a valued volunteer with the Marietta Police Department since 2018. He always has a positive attitude and willingness to go above and beyond.
Thank you.
Thank you sir.
Well, thank you. Stay up here.
Odell Thompson. Odell Thompson has volunteered throughout Cobb County for many nonprofit organizations and took a leadership role on the Ostell Community Task Force as treasurer and vice chair and with Friendship Community Church of College Park as the food/usher ministries treasurer.
Well, thank you for being here today. It's our honor to honor you and we want to thank you for all the work that you've done in serving community and for many of you in serving Cobb County. You certainly help to make it the best that it can be every day with all of your efforts. And I'm going to turn this microphone over to Ms. Van Brackel because I know you hold this event every year and would like for you to highlight the amazing accomplishment of what you do and the program.
Thank you Commission. First of all, I want to thank the Board of Commissioners who do this with us every year. This is our fifth year and we give us honor and honor our seniors with, I think, the highest honor in the county from the Board of Commissioners. I also like to let you know that there are staff here from Senior Services, the Director and Sandy and Iwana. And I like, there are several board members here. There's Ms. Kaiser. Ms. Ainaz. I've got my own. And Linda Harris. And these two are staff members from the Cobb Senior Services. And I appreciate because everybody works together to help our seniors and they're doing just a fabulous job. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We're going to need to probably get in two rows to take a picture. And yes, Commissioners, we can help provide some more if we were to stand on the dais and then we can have the taller awardees in the back and the less tall awardees in the front. Okay, Stace Hook, I see others wanting to take pictures, so feel free to come in the middle and do so. All right, thank you to our awardees. Okay, next up on our agenda, I will be presenting a proclamation to Cobb County's Board of Elections in preparation of the November 2022 election. For those here with elections, please feel free to join us up front. Hi ladies, how are you? Hi. Hi. We are privileged to have this amount of representation from Cobb County Board of Elections. We must have automated service now. Automated election? Don't want to start that rumor. Let me take that back. But we are certainly pleased to have them with us. These are some of our most dedicated servants across our county and they are in the throes of elections. And considering all of the labor and all of the light that is shone upon elections, it was important for us to honor them during this very busy time for them and to express our appreciation for all that you do. So with that, I'm going to share this proclamation. Whereas the critical role that professional election clerks play in local government and election administration is essential to the prosperity and sanctity of our democracy. And whereas Cobb County elections and registration team members strive to always remain impartial when executing their essential duties regardless of political affiliation. And whereas amid significant challenges, including record voter turnout, the ongoing COVID pandemic, critical staffing shortages, and redistricting, and, and... These same election officials never failed to show their commitment, flexibility, determination, and dedication to conducting free and fair elections. And whereas despite unprecedented challenges, election officials remained committed to providing enhanced poll worker training and transition to a new elections and registration office, providing adequate space to allow divisions within the department to be contained within the new facility. Now therefore, we, the Cobb County Board of Commissioners, recognize the county elections and registration department staff, our friends and our neighbors who serve as poll workers and local election officials. We commend the members of the elections and registration team for their ongoing effective and efficient service and commitment to conducting free and fair elections. This the 25th day of October 2022. Thank you. Yes, I'm going to have our Director share a few words before you take pictures, Allison.
Thank you very much Commissioners for recognizing the great work that these election officials have done and continue to do. And they are, all of our election officials are our friends and neighbors, so please do support them. Election Day is more than just election day to us. For us, it's not just while people are voting, but it is during the weeks and weeks of preparation. So during the time we are, we are developing new procedures, we're preparing equipment, forms, and instructions, we're training our fabulous poll workers and hopefully maybe some of you either are or will be poll workers someday. And our year-round task of keeping the registration records accurate. Our work is not just while people are voting. We are thrilled to see the turnout that we've been seeing in the midterm elections and encourage all eligible voters to cast their ballot and choose their representatives at all levels of government. There are currently 12 voting locations open this week with minimal lines and 13 locations open next week. This Friday is the last day to apply for an absentee ballot. And I'd just like to briefly introduce some of my team members here. I have my Preparation Center Manager Michael Dietrich and some of his staff. They have been working for the last five weeks testing the equipment and preparing supplies for Election Day polls. And prior to that, they moved and organized an entire warehouse to our new location at 995 Roswell Street. I have Elections Manager Kara Pringle and her team. They have been conducting poll worker training classes six days a week for the last six weeks. And they've been implementing new software program for recruiting and managing poll workers and coordinating 147 facilities that host elections on Election Day. And Registration Manager Erica Hamilton, she's over early voting and absentee mail as well as voter registration. Unfortunately, most of her team, although she has one team member here, they are still at work because they've been there since 7:00 and they voted till 7:00 p.m. And they're preparing for a 7:00 a.m. opening tomorrow. So a lot of hard work goes into elections. And I'd also like to introduce members of our Board of Elections. We have two members here, Jessica Brooks and our Chairwoman Tori Silas and the other... We have three members who weren't able to make it, Pat Gartland, Steve Brunning, and Jennifer Mossbacher. And Tori, do you want to say a few words?
Very briefly. Very, very briefly. I also want to thank the Commission for recognizing the work, the hard work that this team does. I have the pleasure and the honor, as Director Evelyn mentioned, to serve alongside Jessica Brooks, who's our Vice Chair, and to serve the citizens of Cobb County. They are our friends, they are our neighbors, and it's my pleasure to serve. And we are hopeful and happy to see the amount of residents that have come out to vote thus far. We look forward to the remaining two weeks and then on Election Day. So again, thank you.
All right, our next proclamation will be brought by Commissioner Burl. And Commissioner Gamble. Commissioner?
Good evening, everyone. Could we have our Senior Services Director Sandy, Mike, is Mike Nichols here?
He's not.
He's not. Oh yeah, good, okay. And Jotun, is she going to come up with this one too? It's Senior Night in Cobb County. So these ladies, and Mike Nichols, our Veterans Service, Senior Service Coordinator, wanted to do something to honor our veterans. And there's a program to put a green light in your porch light to honor our veterans for the month of November. So Commissioner Gamble and I are going to read the proclamation together. Whereas the residents of Cobb County honor the men and women who have served in the armed forces, we believe their service has been vital in maintaining the freedoms and the way of life enjoyed by our citizens. And whereas veterans continue to serve community in the American Legion, veterans of foreign wars, religious groups, civil service, and by functioning as Cobb, as county veteran service officers in 29 states to help fellow former service members access more than $52 billion in federal health, disability, and compensation benefits each year. And whereas approximately 200,000 service members transition to civilian communities each year, an estimated 20% increase of service members will transition to civilian life in the near future. Transitioned service members often experience high levels of stress and are at a risk for suicide.
Whereas the National Association of Counties encourages everyone to recognize Operation Green Light, an initiative highlighting veterans who have difficulty accessing benefits after serving their country. They appreciate the sacrifices of our United States military personnel and believe specific recognition should be granted. Now therefore, we, the Cobb County Board of Commissioners, do hereby designate Cobb County as a Green Light for Veterans County and declare all of October through Veterans Day, November 11, 2022, a time to salute and honor the service and sacrifice of our men and women in uniform transitioning from active service. This the 25th day of October 2022.
Can I ask all of our veterans in the room to please stand? Thank you.
I think for us, the Senior Services, of course, we focus a lot on veterans and veterans programs. I have to really give kudos to Kathy Latham and Mike Nichols, who could not be here with us tonight, but they brought this initiative to my attention. And again, thank you for leading us, shine a light on this. Please, everyone, look the week of November 7, the entire week, look for county facilities. We are going to light them green. And so this is in honor of all veterans in Cobb. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Burl. Our final presentation will be brought by Commissioner Richardson.
The East Cobb Quilters Guild could join me up here. Fantastic. Hello. Fantastic. The East Cobb Quilters Guild was founded in 1982 to promote and perpetuate the art of quilting, to encourage innovation and artistic growth among quilters, to provide fellowship among quilters, and to foster community goodwill. This year, the Guild is celebrating 40 years of quilting, education, community service, quilt shows and exhibits, and acts of kindness. And with more than 320 members throughout the greater Atlanta area, the Guild meets monthly and sponsors lectures, workshops, and exhibits that educate members of the community about quilting and encourage the highest standards in design and techniques. And the Guild presented the 18th edition of Georgia Celebrates Quilts, the largest ongoing quilt show in the state, showcasing over 300 quilts and attracting thousands of visitors to Cobb County Civic Center. And members of the East Cobb Quilters Guild, women and men, young and mature, include nationally recognized quilt artists, journalists, designers, and teachers, whose work is regularly seen across the county. And the Guild contributes hundreds of quilts, placemats, and pillowcases each year to nonprofit communities as part of the community service commitment. Current projects include quilts for the Cobb County Department of Family and Children's Services and the Cobb County Adult Protective Services, placemats for Meals on Wheels, and pillowcases for Ryan's Case for Smiles benefiting hospitalized children. Now, we, the Cobb County Board of Commissioners, do hereby recognize the East Cobb Quilters Guild on their 40th anniversary. We encourage them to continue to promote the quilting arts and bring recognition to the great quilts stitched here in Cobb County and across our state this 25th day of October. Congratulations.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Richardson, and to all the Board of Commissioners. My name is Linda Bailey. I serve as the President of the Guild this year. And joining me are Caroline Benefield, who will be President next year, and Robin Meyer, a former President. They are friends and, and wonderful quilters. Our theme during our 40th year has been honor the past, celebrate the present, and welcome the future. Like every organization, we have been impacted by the pandemic. And one of the results of that, of course, was that we, for two years, met virtually. Our members during that time created and donated thousands of masks to help in the effort against the pandemic. Our quilt show was delayed a year. And we, we, and yet we came back to the Cobb County Civic Center this year stronger than ever with the best quilt show ever. We have partnered this year with the Cobb County Libraries and with the Cobb County Arts Centers in presenting quilt exhibits there. And we are on track to exceed our quotas, our, our goals in the number of quilts and the number of placemats and, and pillowcases that we will donate to our community partners. So we are excited to be in our 40th year. Our membership is the highest ever. We love meeting in person, and it will be my pleasure to present this proclamation to our members when we meet at the end of this week. Thank you again so very much.
Does she need to take another picture? Okay. All right, thank you all who participated in our presentations today. We are now moving on to our first public comment. Bill, if you can provide how many speakers we have signed up for today?
There are 12.
12 speakers. Similar to our last meeting, Commissioners, considering that a number of our speakers may desire to speak towards a matter on our agenda, I will ask by show of consensus if there is a desire for all speakers to be moved to the top of this agenda. I see one. Commissioner Gamble, are you comfortable with us having all no? So I see a no, no. How about you, Commissioner Burl? Okay. So with that, there is not an adequate consensus of our board, so we will just hear from six speakers at the top of this agenda. And later in the meeting, we will have a second public comment, of which we will have another six speakers.
Just as a reminder, please silence or turn off your telephone, your cellphone. It interrupts the meeting and also interferes with the broadcast. As the Board provides the podium for public comment, it's appropriate to review the related meeting rules. Please state your name, and if you're speaking on behalf of an organization, all comments should be addressed through the chair. Public comment is not a dialogue with the Board, but an opportunity for speakers to provide their comments to the Board. The comments should not be impertinent, derogatory, offensive, or slanderous. To that end, the Board encourages, regardless of the topic, for the audience to be respectful and courteous to the speakers. Everyone attending this meeting should give others the right to both listen and be heard by treating each other with civility. Statements made during the public comments portion do not necessarily reflect the opinions of the Board or the administration of Cobb County Government. And just as a reminder, there is a timer on the podium. Each speaker has five minutes, and the first speaker is Dave McFarlane. Within Cobb County, we have...
Good evening, Dave. I know you've been here multiple times, but help in introducing yourself.
Dave McFarlane.
Thank you.
I represent myself. You know who I am.
Yes.
Within Cobb County, there's the Kennesaw Mountain. And one day in 1864, 3,000 men laid down their, their lives for, for an issue. At, at the Dead Angle, there were men who were 12 deep, according to reports, and there was a river of blood that came down from that. So what was a great cause that would cause so many men to lay down their lives?
When you think about racial equality and civil rights, which political party comes to mind? The Republicans or the Democrats? Most people would probably say the Democrats, but this answer is incorrect. Since its founding in 1829, the Democratic Party has fought against every major civil rights initiative and has a long history of discrimination. The Democratic Party defended slavery, started the Civil War, opposed Reconstruction, founded the Ku Klux Klan, imposed segregation, perpetrated lynchings, and fought against the Civil Rights Acts of the 1950s and 1960s. In contrast, the Republican Party was founded in 1854 as an anti-slavery party. Its mission was to stop the spread of slavery into the new Western Territories with the aim of abolishing it entirely. This effort, however, was dealt a major blow by the Supreme Court in the 1857 case, Dred Scott versus Sanford. The Court ruled that slaves aren't citizens, they're property. The seven justices who voted in favor of slavery? All Democrats. The two justices who dissented? Both Republicans. The slavery question was, of course, ultimately resolved by bloody Civil War. The Commander in Chief during that war was the first Republican President, Abraham Lincoln, the man who freed the slaves. Six days after the Confederate Army surrendered, John Wilkes Booth, a Democrat, assassinated President Lincoln. Lincoln's Vice President, a Democrat named Andrew Johnson, assumed the presidency.
Yes.
But Johnson adamantly opposed Lincoln's plan to integrate the newly freed slaves into the South's economic and social order. Johnson and the Democratic Party were unified in their opposition to the 13th Amendment, which abolished slavery, the 14th Amendment, which gave blacks citizenship, and the 15th Amendment, which gave blacks the vote. All three passed only because of universal Republican support.
No, it's five minutes. Now, shh.
During the era of Reconstruction, federal troops stationed in the South had security...
She goes on to talk about the historical myth that there was a switch, that the Republicans became the bad guys and the Democrats became the good guys. And she says, well, no.
Excuse me, excuse, I'm sorry, David. Just hold on for me one moment. There may be matters of disagreement that are shared during public comment, but each speaker is allowed to speak and is deserving of respect from the audience, which means to be free from interruption or jury. That same respect is due to anyone that comes up and speaks on this podium. There are some exceptions for which we can ask the speaker to stop addressing certain types of remarks. There has not been anything stated by the speaker that what causes to do that this evening. So I just ask that you give him at least the benefit of, of silence so that he can provide his comments for the remainder of his time. Thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you, I appreciate that. She goes on to talk about that myth, the Southern Strategy switch, and stating that the Republicans maintained abolition of slavery and right, equal rights, and that the Democrats replaced slavery with another form of slavery, which is socialism. So why are we conservatives so extreme about socialism? Because we see a slippery slope to another form of slavery even worse called Marxism, which killed 100 billion people worldwide and enslaved a third of the planet, billions for generations. Was that going to happen? Haven't we evolved from that? Maybe, maybe not, but it's a dangerous thing to approach. It's not a linear scale. And you know what I mean by linear scale. It's a logarithmic thing. So my question is here, before the Kennesaw Mountain, there were other bloodletting, and one was Trail of Tears, Democrats. Number two was, was plantations, the Cheney, we're on the Cheney plantation property right here, and Cherokee Nation. My, my point is this, it, it's, it's still dangerous, it still can happen. And I'm not talking about Democrats, I'm talking about centralization, all the other things that can occur. Please be aware, it can happen. So my question is, where do you stand on Kennesaw Mountain? Are you there fighting against slavery, or are you unwittingly part of their fighting for slavery? Please think about that. It's a, it's a dangerous slippery slope. We, we love Jerica, and, and we're opposing this just because we love her, but we hate slavery. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next public speaker is Hill Wright.
Yes, Commissioner, thank you. Again, for those in the audience, we are in the public comment portion of our meeting where we have six speakers that are able to speak of matters of their choice, given that they're not slanderous or derogatory. We just ask that you give them the opportunity to provide their comments to the Board. They have five minutes to do so, and ask that they do that without interruption. Yes?
Hill Wright, good evening, Chairwoman. I come for you tonight with very mixed feelings. Cobb County has gone through a lot of changes in the last decade, especially in the Cumberland area. That, that area has diverged into most every aspect from East Cobb. I think the maps adopted with East Cobb in one district is a better representation for East Cobb, who has different needs now than Cumberland or other areas. This will allow a Commissioner to better focus on the needs of East Cobb. Chairwoman, Commissioner Richardson has served District 2 well, and I'm very appreciative for her service. She has been available for her constituents and helped a lot of people. For her not to be able to serve out her full term just doesn't seem rational. I think a can of worms has been opened, and unless it's dealt with somehow, this process will be used as a weapon to end the terms of elected officials. I'm not a lawyer, so I can't begin to unravel the complexities of all of this, but I don't think Mr. Rowling would put his reputation and career on the line unless he was sure. In the future, both parties have to work together to find consensus. I will pray that a good and wise resolution will prevail. I need to address something else, since this was done in public, it needs to be addressed in public. Every Commissioner is elected to represent the people and entrusted to be their voice in this chamber. Every Commissioner should have the opportunity, free from interference, to express themselves. The Chair should not serve as a censor or filter, even if the Chair strongly disagrees. The Chair is supposed to facilitate this Board to weigh things out, and part of that is hearing from the Commissioners, especially if they raise concerns. Their concerns should not be shut out because they conflict with the Chair. This is not to say that the Chair's views are not valid, but it is only when a full and robust discussion is allowed to take place that a complete deliberation of this Board can occur. I watched the last meeting in horror as Commissioner Gamble raised concerns, and the Chair was blatantly disrespectful to Commissioner Gamble because she questioned something that was not shared with her and thus not shared with the people she represents. That was her right to do so without interference by the Chair. Then through the rest of the meeting, the Chair ridiculed Commissioner Gamble with passive-aggressive remarks that were uncalled for and becoming of a leader. This should not happen again. Furthermore, the Chair should not be sending out emails to constituents naming other constituents, which one might view as slanderous remarks. Chairwoman Cupid, you're better than this. I saw it at the Soul Mill Library where you conducted a town hall, and your leadership was excellent. It was a very tough conversation, a very difficult discussion to navigate, and your leadership shined through bright that night. Everyone felt like they were heard and respected. No one was shut down because they had a different view, and you allowed people to speak freely, and when it became grandstanding, you stepped in in a very classy way to curtail it. I would hope we would see more of that confident, even-handed leader. And another thing, I'm just wondering, why are we that show up to these meetings now being made to stand outside and wait to get in this building now, when we used to be able to come in and sit and wait and have fellowship together? This, I would request that the building remain open so that people who come to this meeting can be inside, and particularly now that it's going to be getting cold. Thank you.
Thank you, Hill.
The next public speaker is Valerie Richardson.
was excellent. It was a very tough conversation, a very difficult discussion to navigate, and your leadership shined through bright that night. Everyone felt like they were heard and respected. No one was shut down because they had a different view, and you allowed people to speak freely, and when it became grandstanding, you stepped in in a very classy way to curtail it. I would hope we would see more of that confident, even-handed leader. And another thing, I'm just wondering, why are we that show up to these meetings now being made to stand outside and wait to get in this building now, when we used to be able to come in and sit and wait and have fellowship together? This, I would request that the building remain open so that people who come to this meeting can be inside, and particularly now that it's going to be getting cold. Thank you.
Thank you, Hill.
The next public speaker is Valerie Richardson.
Good evening, Chairwoman, Cupid County Manager, Dr. McMorris, and distinguished Commissioners. My name is Valerie Richardson. I'm a resident of Cobb County, District One, and mother of Jerica, I'm sorry, Commissioner Jerica Richardson. I come to you this evening with a couple of words that stand out in my mind and in my heart: appalled and audacity. I'm appalled as a constituent of Cobb County that a person can run a successful campaign and win so gracefully that her own opponent has grazed our home and eaten food that I've prepared with our family. Appalled that this election can be null and void after two years because of map drawn by people who do not live in this district, nor did they consider the advice of the census auditors that Cobb County was fine as is, nor did they even take the time to consult with any of you Commissioners before drawing this map, as it has traditionally been done in the past. Appalled that these people totally avoid you and your input as Commissioners and draw a map that would draw out Commissioner Richardson from her seat with no consequence on their part. Did they think that she would just move back to her old apartment or sit back and cry? Did they not think that there would be some sort of uproar, a lawsuit, or even a special election needed? Now that would be a waste of tax money. The audacity of them to first, discount this Board, and secondly, remove a person from her duly-elected position. I have a strong feeling that if this were, sorry, that if Commissioner Richardson, Richardson's predecessor, Bob Ott, was in this position, this would not have happened. It is, is it because you are a five-member female Commission that your opinions and objections were not discounted? Representative Eric Allen consulted with this Board on a map that they would be totally, that would be totally ignored, as there was a larger agenda at hand. The audacity. Appalled that a nonchalant comment could be made that Commissioner Richardson should simply move, as she's young and urban. The audacity to think that a person who purchased a home carefully selected in her elected district and where she grew up should simply move. Me, along with her father, grandmother, and brothers helped her on her search for her house. We watched proudly as she purchased that house, renovated that house, and made that house her home, to share with others, including current and former Commissioner Bob Ott. Appalled to see that many of our friends of East Cobb, specifically in the Walton District, where we previously lived, supported Commissioner Richardson, both financially and by voting for her. Appalled that their votes may not count. The argument here is that the map was drawn and became law, and we should just abide. You argued the Board does not have the right to change this law. Well, I'm here to tell you that laws are sometimes meant to be amended, as they are outright wrong. Laws, laws that we all knew were an oppression of people, like segregation, and women's voting rights were in place, but then some courageous people like Dr. Martin Luther King, Jr., and Elizabeth Cady Stanton spoke up and fought hard fights to right those wrongs. Do we have to wait another 100 years for this wrong to be fixed? You Commissioners have the authority to fix this now. If this is not an example of state overreach, I don't know what is. That's why we elected you. We trust that you will be fair and righteous, be courageous, be righteous, be appalled. I do believe wholeheartedly that if your seat was in jeopardy, you would want the other Commissioners to be courageous, be righteous, and be appalled. Drastic times calls for drastic measures. It is right, and it is just. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Ms. Grubbs.
Thank you, excuse me before you get started. Let's make sure you have adequate time. We have our next speaker at the podium. Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. It was a little bit hard to hear back there, just so you know, with the, that's why I moved the microphone. My name is Sally Grubbs, and I am the Cobb County Republican Party Chairwoman, but most importantly, I am a Cobb County resident. There are several key points that I want to talk about. One of those is that week before last, I attended a meeting and heard disturbing statistics on homelessness among veterans in Cobb County. I was astounded that we are distributing funds to others when we have homeless veterans on the streets of Cobb. I ask that you put veterans first. Secondly, recently, you hosted a Chrysalis Lab event with United Way of Atlanta, and Chrysalis Lab is an organization that, quote, "drives social change, catalyzes powerful transformation and systemic transformation using safe spaces for collaboration." This was done with the United Way of Atlanta and the Cobb Collaborative. Chrysalis Labs promotes, quote, "radical transformation," according to their website. From that event, a survey was done. This is all done with the goal of implementing DEI in Cobb County. Why are you participating with an organization that promotes radical change? What radical change do you want? I'd like to commend you, Commissioner Cupid, or Chairwoman Cupid, for addressing everyone here, because we do all deserve equal time, and I want to thank you for that. The next thing that I'm going to address is difficult because I really like Jerica Richardson. I think she's a lovely individual, and I think that she represents some of her constituents well. I know a lot of her constituents that they would disagree with that. And I was very impressed with her mother as well. She's a lovely woman as well, and being part of a community means sometimes really liking people but hating their policies and still getting along with them at the end of the day. So my comments concerning the seat, I ask where the integrity is. Where is the meeting decorum that is preached all the time? These maps were signed into law by the Legislature at the beginning of the year, signed into law by the Governor. Did the Commissioner threaten action then? No. Did she threaten action prior to the primary? No. Did she elect to resign from her district and run based on the new maps in the primary? No. Why did she wait? Why is she potentially going to cost Cobb County hundreds of thousands of dollars in a special election? This was an apparent calculated plan by Commissioner Richardson and others. What about doing what's right for constituents? If Commissioner Richardson truly cared, she would run in the newly redrawn District Three primary, or she could have moved, or she would not have moved, knowing reapportionment was happening. We all knew the census was happening in 2020. She chose to move in June of 2021. She purchased her home just a short six months prior to the approved maps. The threatened legal action just before a major election is a ploy and a maneuver, and she should recuse herself from the major conflict of interest that's been created by voting with this body. Like I said, it's difficult when, you know, we can agree to disagree on policy issues and things like this, but this was an intentional move. This didn't just happen. It wasn't an accident, and it's done with a specific purpose, and it's not fair to the citizens of Cobb County. I'm asking Commissioner, that Commissioner Richardson recuse herself from the vote, and I'm asking that the laws of the state of Georgia be upheld. We can talk about courageous things, but this was known going into it, and it's done with a purpose specifically, and we're aware of that. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Matthew Stegal.
Stegal.
Hello, Chairwoman and Commissioners. My name is Matt Stegal. I've been a resident here for over 30 years, and I'm an appointed representative of the Trans Advisory Board, and I'll hopefully get to that topic in a bit. But first, I would like to talk about the issue the county faces today regarding home rule and the redistricting of one of our Commissioners. A couple weeks ago at the last board meeting, I heard a lot of public comment that referenced legal and moral arguments. I'm not a lawyer, and I can't comment on what the courts will decide, but I think it's funny that for some commenters, their logic changes based on the party they represent. Of these, there's one line of comments that shocked me, where I kept hearing, "Just move. Just move." People literally stood up here and suggested one of their neighbors should move where they live and where they call home. We talk about local control and how this county is exceptional, but when the state comes in and does an unprecedented action to remove a Commissioner who is elected into office from thousands of voters, the response is, "She should just move." My only response to that is what I heard someone else say, I believe it was you, Chairwoman Cupid, "History is watching us. What we say today and what we do today, and it will judge us." And I urge the county to do everything it can to be on the right side of history and support the dutifully-elected Commissioner, and I urge that every Commissioner support that. Jerica, I know that some people will stand up here asking you to recuse yourself, but you have over 57,000 of your neighbors who have voted for you that you represent. You have every right to protect the public official that they elected. Regarding transit, I was honored to be here today to continue to see us discuss bringing transit for everyone to this county. It's time we turn that discussion into action, and we make progress. I look forward to working with all five of you in the future to make that happen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Ampkin.
Peter Ampkin, 22 years living in Cobb County. I'm speaking in regards to Agenda Item 31, a resolution amending local law, and I'm asking that this Board of Commissioners vote down on that resolution. I'd like to quote again from a letter I read a few weeks ago from the Office of Legislative Council, General Assembly of Georgia. Article 9, and this is referenced, by the way, in the resolution. Article 9, Section 2, Paragraph 1 of the Constitution of Georgia authorizes counties to amend their local acts by resolutions or ordinance, but Subparagraph C sets forth limitations on this authority. While none of these limitations expressly reference apportionments, districts, reapportionments, or redistricting, Subparagraph C1 and C2 have bearing by prohibiting a county's use of the home rule to affect either, quote, "action affecting any elective county office," unquote, or, quote, "action affecting the composition, form, procedure for election, or appointment of county governing authority," unquote, of which, of course, Jerica is. It is practically indisputable in this letter that a county home rule resolution or ordinance changing the boundaries of the districts from which county Commissioners are elected would be an action affecting the procedure for election of the county's governing authority. So there is no constitutional authority for counties to use their home rule powers to enact redistricting legislations. I understand your concerns. I agree with those concerns, but the law is the law. While the governing authorities of Georgia municipalities have a limited statutory home rule authority to undertake their own reapportionment or redistricting, no such statutory authority exists for Georgia counties. We are a Georgia county, not a municipality in this regard. Far from being a broader, far from being broader expansive, the powers of county boards of Commissioners is fairly limited. Neither the counties of the state nor their offices can do any act, make any contract, nor incur any liability not authorized by some legislative act applicable thereto. If there is reasonable doubt of the existence of a particular power, the doubt is to be resolved in the negative. Powers of county Commissioners are strictly limited by law, and they can do nothing except under authority of law. There is no authority of law giving a county the right to cause a redistricting of any In a Georgia case, 1979, any authority for a county board of Commissioners to undertake its own redistricting must be derived from an explicit constitutional or statutory grant of authority. In the event there is any doubt as to whether or not such authority has been granted, if there's any doubt whatsoever, Georgia law requires a finding that no such authority has been given. There is great doubt about that. Furthermore, five of the current justices on the Georgia Supreme Court in a case Camp versus Williams, 2022, recently reminded government entities that are dependent on statutory authority that, quote, "The absence of statutory authority is the absence of legal authority to act," unquote. That's from the Georgia Supreme Court. In another case, Batker versus Taylor, the United States District Court for the Northern District of Georgia has held Georgia counties, has held that Georgia counties lack any constitutional or statutory authority to enact redistricting legislation. The District Court went on to find that, quote, "The General Assembly is the only legislative body with the power to enact redistricting legislation for Georgia counties." This should be taken up with the Legislature, not with the Board of Commissioners. This is an issue for the state Legislature, not an issue for our Board of Commissioners. Another federal District Court Judge in the Northern District referenced Batker in her ruling regarding redistricting the county's Board of Commissioners following the 2000 United States Census, and directed, and directed the General Assembly, not the Board of Commissioners, to undertake its duty, that is, the duty of the General Assembly, to adopt a new district plan for the Board, based on the fact that the Georgia Constitution explicitly prohibits counties from using home rule.
Mr. Ampkin, sorry, your time is up.
Thank you.
The law is the law, and you are not the Attorney General. The law is the law.
Excuse me, please, our audience, let's refrain from having discourse in our audience, and let's keep the decorum of this meeting. Bill, are there any additional speakers?
That's the conclusion for the first portion of the speakers.
Thank you. Let's go ahead and take a five-minute recess. Thank you. Thank you. Agenda, there are a number of items that are voted on in bank. Those items have been scrolling on the screen prior to this meeting, and we'll scroll on the screen at the end of the meeting. Commissioners, are there any changes that are requested or anyone not in support of the matters on consent? Generally, that I should be mindful of?
Yes.
Okay.
Number 20.
Okay.
Is that, do we have a revision on that?
No.
No, ma'am, it is correct as written.
Okay. Are there any other questions? I'll go ahead and put forward a formal motion, and then we'll have additional time to entertain any other comments or questions. With that, Commissioners, I move that we approve the items on our consent agenda as it has been revised and to authorize execution of the necessary documents by the appropriate county personnel. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion or additional questions?
No.
Okay. Seeing none, call the question. The motion passes 5-0. Thank you, Commissioners. With that, we are moving on to the county managers tab. I believe they have one item.
Good evening, Chairwoman, excuse me. Good evening, Chairwoman Commissioners, Madam County Manager. Our item this evening is for the Board to approve a letter of engagement to the county's agreement with PFM Consulting to conduct an operational performance efficiency review and assessment on select county departments and/or functions. On August 23rd, the Board approved the top three ranked firms to complete this study. Our discussions with the top-ranked firm, PFM Consulting, resulted in an agreed-upon scope and fee. The scope of work that is attached to this agenda item details how during Phase 1 of the study, they will conduct interviews with board members and senior county managers. They will also collect and review data and documents to include budgets, financial statements, FTE headcounts, and other performance metrics. Upon synthesizing the interview results and the data evaluations, PFM will provide recommendations to the county manager of priority departments and/or functions for review. A deeper dive will then be made into the two departments or cross-department functions consisting of issues like program or service utilization, service levels, service delivery models, organizational structure, staffing and span of control, costs, revenues, procurement, workforce, customer service, et cetera. The end goal of the project is to ensure that Cobb County is operating as efficiently as possible. Therefore, we ask the Board of Commissioners to approve a letter of engagement as found in Revision Number 2 to the Agreement for Professional Financial Advisory Services with PFM Consulting to add an additional scope of work conducting an organizational performance efficiency review and assessment in an amount not to exceed $300,000, authorize the corresponding budget transactions, and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
So moved. So moved as presented. Second, is there any additional discussion or questions? Commissioner Gamble.
So Jimmy, I know we had quite a discussion yesterday with Jackie as well, and I thank you for that. Couple of issues that I have with this is, it says, "Select Departments," and it was brought to our attention yesterday in work session that there were two departments that were selected, and it was at the discretion of a member of this board. However, when reading the contract, it says that the county manager is supposed to direct the assessment based upon the direction of the county manager. So what I have concern with, and this is based on what happened with the Evergreen study, is again, the county sent out for a consultant to do a job. The consultant was doing a job, and then a member of the board stepped in and put that consultant into a different path and direction. So here again, we've got another consulting firm that's supposed to come in here and review an efficiency, yet we are not giving them the opportunity to look at the county as a whole and then pick where they think we need to have a review. Instead, there is one member who, per this agenda item, does not have the authority to direct that outcome. So my question is, is by approving this agenda, how do we know that the authority remains with the county manager to direct how this evaluation goes and is not usurped by a member of the board? Because again, that changes the outcome.
At the end of Phase 1, when the consultant finishes their interviews with the board and with senior county leaders, as well as gathering the information, they will do a presentation to the board and to senior county leadership on their findings. At that time, you will know that it's coming from them and not from either a single member of county leadership or from an elected official. What was said at the agenda work session was one board member's opinion, and it could be, it could end up that those two departments are selected by PFM. We just don't know until they get in and see the, see the scope of the larger departments, because obviously that's where you look at for greater efficiencies. If you have a department that has a $100,000 operating budget, the efficiencies that you may find in a smaller department like that will not be equitable to what you would find in a multi-million dollar department. So they will come back before the board and before county leadership and present their findings, and at that time, the county manager will have, I'm sure, gather input from the board, and will make that decision.
Commissioner Richardson.
And I did receive clarity yesterday that the consultants would be coming in to review all of the areas across the county at a high level, and that's what they would be providing that presentation on.
Correct.
At that point.
They will also, after those interviews, if certain individuals during the interview process say, for example, maybe, "I don't think we're handling our PC replacement in an efficient manner." Well, that's something they're going to look at. They're going to look at through purchasing documents, through the methods that IS doles out new PCs, how often they replace them. So it can be a cross-department function like procurement, PC replacement. It could be that versus two departments when it's all said and done, but it's all going to depend on what they hear during the interviews.
Thank you.
And reviewing the data.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you. Commissioner Burl.
Thank you. The $300,000 that was budgeted for this, that's Phase 1. So what, what is it going to cost to do, review all departments across the board?
Well, that will be, that'll, that will be depended on if the board likes the product that they receive from these first two. If the board sees that this type of a deep dive into an apartment, into a department gives us efficiencies that we should pursue and it saves the county money, then the county could decide they want to go further. But if they, if they don't like the end product, then we're done at $300,000.
But you're not going to know if you're only doing one or two departments, and you've got a whole county full of departments, and does that include the courts and the sheriff and the constitutional officers?
No, Board of Commissioners.
No, it's just county.
Yeah, Board of Commissioners.
Commissioner Sheffield, did you want to add any comments?
No. We pretty much cleared everything for me at the work session yesterday. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let me just make it very clear. Me having a conversation with staff is not directing staff, and it's not usurping their Staff came to me and asked me, "What departments should we consider?" And I shared, "The ones that are the greatest line items in our budget would be the ones that present greatest opportunity." The majority of our budget is spent in public safety and in parks, and those, that was my feedback. It was not telling anyone to do anything. It was just simply sharing a suggestion, because if we're going to get a handle on our budget, and I think as any business that wanted to get a handle on their budget, they're going to look at the areas of which they have the greatest expense. This was not done to target any department. This was not done with any forcefulness. This was just done in assessing our numbers, and I bring a heavy sigh too up here sometimes. The opportunity we have here is to see how we can be best efficient and a good steward of our tax dollars. With that, there's a motion, and there was a second. Go ahead and call the question. The motion carries 3-2 with Commissioners Burl and Gamble in opposition.
Thank you, Chairwoman.
We are now at our Sheriff's tab.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Commissioners, Madam County Manager. The first agenda item we have is Agenda Item 23. This is to authorize the purchase, the purchasing director to purchase a 2022 EVT electric prisoner transport vehicle from EVT. This will be done under a sole source purchase. Funding will come from the 2016 SPOST Project Sheriff's Equipment Program X1070. It'll be the first in the country to use this vehicle in this manner, and it will be in partnership with Director Curtis at Fleet Management.
Thank you. So moved as presented.
Second.
Is there any discussion? We'll call the question. The motion passes 4-1 with Commissioner Gamble in opposition.
Yes, ma'am, and I failed to introduce myself. Braxton Cotton, Chief of Staff.
Braxton, it's good to see you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. The next will be Agenda Item 24, and this is to approve the purchase order of Riley Contracting with design, construction, and general conditions cost for construction of vehicles and equipment storage building at the adult detention center. It was a sealed bid. It'll come out of the 2016 SPOST.
So moved as presented.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Call the question. The motion passes 5-0. Thank you.
Thank you.
We are now at our DOT tab.
Good evening, Chairwoman Commissioners, County Manager Drew Wrestler, DOT. DOT has five items for your consideration this evening. Our first item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve Change Order Number 2 Final to the Sole Source Contract with For You Services DBA Stellar Services. Savings to the contract in the amount of $29,273.60 for transportation technology, project view development and support, project number X2532. Authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the question. The motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. Our next item tonight is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve Project Number B2542 Task Order Number 1 to the 2022 Master Task Order Contract with Gresham Smith in an amount not to exceed $219,301 for development of a comprehensive safety action plan. Authorize the corresponding budget transaction and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Call the question. The motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. Our next item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve a Cobb Framework Agreement with the City of Marietta in an amount not to exceed $3 million for 2022 special purpose local option sales, tax, joint city projects, and authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Gamble.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Call the question. The motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. Our next item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve Change Order Number 2 Final to the Utility Relocation Agreement with Georgia Transmission Corporation. Savings to the agreement in the amount of $81,367.39 for preliminary engineering and relocation of facilities on Cherokee Street, project number X2603. Authorize the corresponding budget transaction and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Richardson.
Kelly.
Excuse me. Commissioner Burl.
Motion to approve.
Second. Is there any discussion? Call the question. The motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. Our final item tonight is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve Project Number E10C04 Task Order Number 1 to the 2022 Master Task Order Contract with RSNH Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $474,000. Incorporated in amount not to exceed $474,587 for Kremlin Transfer Center Site Selection Study. Authorize the corresponding budget transaction and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Now Commissioner Richardson.
So moved.
Second. Is there any discussion? Call the question. The motion carries 5-0. Thank you, Drew.
Thank you.
We are now at our Support Services tab. It's like walking the green mile.
Good evening, Chairwoman.
Good evening.
Commissioners, County Manager. Our item this evening is a joint item between the Sheriff's Office, Property Management and Information Services to request the Board of Commissioners to approve a contract with Helmut Obata and Casa Bomb to provide design, pre-construction, construction management services and to develop an RFP to select a design assist integrator contractor to upgrade, replace the detention system, or detention security system in Cobb County Adult Detention Center as well as the judicial complex facilities. 2016 SPOS Project X0920 in an amount not to exceed $1,256,300, $1,256,300 and authorize a contingency fund in the amount of $125,630 as well as authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Thank you. So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Call the question. The motion passes 5-0.
Thank you.
We are now at our County Attorneys tab.
Good evening, Commissioners. Presenting Item 31. As we spoke before at the last VOC meeting, the current electoral district boundary lines for districts 1 through 4 of the Cobb County Board of Commissioners were redrawn in view of population changes as reflected in the 2022, 2020 census. Changes are necessary so that the districts are proportional in such a way as to satisfy the constitutional requirement of one person, one vote. The majority of the Cobb County Local Delegation to the Georgia General Assembly supported House Bill 1256. These electoral district maps are drawn by the staff of the Legislature Congressional Reapportionment Office of the General Assembly. That reapportionable office has the technical expertise in drawing electoral maps. And the staff drew the electoral lines for House Bill 1256 so as to comply with all legal requirements contained in the United States Constitution, Georgia Constitution, and the Voting Rights Act of 1965. The electoral districts in House Bill 1256 also satisfy traditional redistricting principles of compactness, contiguity, respect for political boundaries, preserving communities of interest, and protection of incumbents. On January 25th, 2022, the majority of this Board of Commissioners voted to approve the electoral district lines drawn in House Bill 1256. House Bill 1256 was never voted on by the General Assembly. The Georgia Constitution empowers county governing authorities to amend and repeal local laws, local legislation that does not concern subject matters specifically enumerated in the Georgia Constitution or addressed on other matters that have been preempted by general law. The Board of Commissioners may adopt a resolution or ordinance amending that local law at two consecutive regular meetings held not closer than seven days apart nor more than 60 days apart. Under the proposed resolutions before you this evening was also before you at your last VOC meeting. The effective date of January 2023 for the boundary lines of districts 1 through 4 would be in accordance with the maps drawn in House Bill 1256. And all elections occurring after January 1st, 2023 would be in accordance with those descriptions. The proposed resolution does not change the provisions in Act 562 requiring the 2022 elections to be conducted in accordance with the boundary lines as originally established in House Bill 562. The recommendation before the Board this evening is whether the Board should adopt a resolution amending Act 562, a local law that amended the local act creating the Board of Commissioners of Cobb County, so as to change the description of the district commission of districts to provide definitions and inclusions, to provide for continuation of office of current members, and to provide effective dates, and to repeal any conflicting laws or for other purposes.
Thank you, Bill. Did I move that we approve the agenda item?
Second.
Is there any discussion or any questions?
Do you have comments?
Go ahead, Commissioner Richardson.
Thank you, everyone, for your comments. Division creeps its way into our community slowly and feeds on the fears of the unknown and many times is led by the toils of a broken heart or the empty time of a creative mind. A warning to us all that, for some reason, Cobb County is targeted. I love my district. It is diverse beyond measure and a true slice of every part of America. I'm grateful for the opportunity to serve and listen to each and every one of you. I thank you for coming here and sharing your thoughts, concerns, and support. As a longtime member of the community, these qualities were some of the reasons I wanted to run for this position. I selfishly knew it would make me a better person and that I could bring the government a little bit closer to the people. That is my belief of what the local government truly is and its primary purpose. It is the operational arm that comes closest to the people and has the responsibility of equipping the community with truth, consistency, and access. For we have a fiduciary responsibility to oversee your investment in the community, in your community. I'm committed to continue bringing this to my constituents. To those that are concerned about their vote this year, it counts. And you will elect whomever you vote for as this does not impact elections. To those that are concerned about their vote in 2020, it counts too. And I am elected for a four-year term. It's almost prophetic that while on the campaign trail, I stated repeatedly we're only guaranteed four years. So we must get real work done every single day and build policies and programs that are sustainable beyond terms. To then be presented with a historic precedent of being forced to two years, a slippery slope indeed. To those that are concerned about partisanship, this transcends partisanship. This is about the balance of power amongst all 159 counties and the State General Assembly. This ensures that future state and federal politics won't play a role in our local government's operational, our daily operations. Permitting quality of life, public safety, zoning, economic development, infrastructure. To those that are concerned about constitutionality, such power is embedded in our constitution, our state constitution, limited to bills that impact a single jurisdiction and does nothing to impact elections or election operations. I trust our counsel as I do in every other matter that comes before this Board. Recently, it became known to me that as the decision to create a map even came about, it was advised that Cobb's current maps were in good standing with the census and required no change. And thus, most of the changes in HB 1256 to the districts occurred on request by each of the Commissioners sitting here on this dais. An imperfect process, but certainly one that respects the balance of power and relationships that should and must exist between the state and the local government. HB 1256 respected this relationship. Yet HB 1154, the bill that was submitted, was neither shared nor discussed with any member of this Board as I was told. HB 1154 was legal, but it did not respect the relationship. The lack of communication was the first break in the longstanding practice. Following that, a special hearing was called in order to avoid specifically passed rules of the Intergovernmental Affairs Committee for redistricting map approvals. During the special hearings, when it was obvious and evident that the proposed bill, 1154, presented a constitutional question, the room fell silent. Yet despite the on-record legal counsel and warning, the General Assembly proceeded with a precedent-making bill nullifying the will of the voters and the will of those who rushed to take off work and have their voices heard in this special hearing with little notice to do that. That special hearing was the second break in a longstanding practice. So then, with the signing of this bill by our governor, we were presented with a looming constitutional question, to which our 1966 constitutional creators, which the 1983 constitutional creators carried over, had the foresight to codify the extent and extensibility of home rule, which by opinion was determined to be extended through situational occurrences. Our legal counsel, who instructs us in legal matters, guides us through zoning hearings, land use rules, precedent, small claims, large claims, federal cases, state cases, and more, has seemed to identify an area of home rule which stands to be clarified, if not already clear. Regarding the invocation of home rule, please take heed that while I may be heavily impacted, it has nothing to do with me. Home rule in and of itself does not solve many of the constitutional quandaries created by HB 1154, but it does establish additional clarity on the use of home rule on local law. In reconciling this, perhaps all we have done is show that there is no democracy in chaos. And with this vote, Cobb County makes history as we all work to lead the way for a more perfect union. Thank you all very much for listening.
Commissioner Burl, I believe you wanted to make some remarks.
Well, first of all, there are many problems with this politically motivated redistricting, redo attempt being pushed by some members of this Board. First of all, it clearly states in the letter that I've submitted for the record at the last meeting by the Legislative Council that this Board has no power or authority over the legislature. I have said from the very beginning, I didn't think it was fair that Commissioner Richardson was drawn out of her district. But we have no control over that, and that's what the challenge is before us, that this, some members of this Board have decided to pursue. So we'll be going down the path of court and taxpayers' dollars, and a judge, I guess, The, when this was first brought to us, I asked an executive session and other meetings with the county attorney for a second legal opinion. And that was not granted. There's a lot of questions as to the procedures here because this is unprecedented, and it hasn't been done like this before. And a lot of, a lot of us and a lot of attorneys don't even know the next steps and how, how to object or pursue. This Board voted on House Bill 1256, Representative Allen's map, in January of this year. And it was a 3-2 vote then. I did not support that map then, and I can't support it now. And I've made those comments clearly when we voted on that as to the reasons why. The maps that we currently have that were, that would, Commissioner Richardson would be in her, her current district, did not meet the numbers for the new census numbers after 10 years. So, you know, there's, it really impacts all of us, but mainly Commissioner Gamble and I, who are on the ballot for November, and were in May and now in November. And it also changes District 2. So we could all recuse ourselves if that's what people seem to think should be done. But, so Mr. Rowland, from here, after this vote is, is completed tonight, the next step is the county sends this after the Chairwoman's signature to the Secretary of State to amend the map for January? Is that correct?
Well, exactly. We'll follow the Constitutional Article 9, Section 2, Paragraph 1 regarding the procedures on how you amend or repeal a local act, which would be filing that accordingly with the Secretary of State's office.
And then it would be upon citizens or an organization to challenge that in a court of law? Or whatever his ruling is, or to stop that?
That, that would be a procedure that someone would be able, potentially be able to do for that, yes.
Well, this is, to me, this should be taken up next year in the legislature. If we want to change the laws of the state, then that's where the laws are made. And that's where it should go in, when they go back in session. And set your precedent there, and then all 159 counties in Georgia will be drawing their own lines if that, if that goes through. If that's what the, if that's what...
Please, please, those in the audience.
If that's what the intention is here. So we don't have the authority or the power, and I can't support this.
Thank you, Commissioner Burl. Do Commissioners have any other comments? Commissioner Gamble.
And while I am sympathetic to Commissioner Richardson and what is going on, we have to remember that this is not personal, and it's about the rule of the law and not making up things as we go. I've asked myself the question because it was rumored that I was going to be drawn out of my district. And back in 2012, I actually, when one of the district maps came up, was in District 2 instead of District 1. So I asked myself, if I was drawn out of my district, would we be sitting here having this conversation on this Board here today? Based on comments that have been made between me and another individual on this Board, I don't think we would be having this conversation. I also question if we remember what happened to the school board because they used the same process as the Board of Commissioners did in redrawing their district maps. Yet where is their challenge to this process? We have heard the word gerrymandering used over and over these last few weeks. This is nothing new, and redrawing the district lines is all part of the political process beyond the scope of the Cobb County Board of Commissioners. The Board is attempting to further manipulate a political process for the sole intent not to govern or develop sound policy, but attempt to gain a news headline. If the home rule focus had been on ensuring constituents' representation come January 1st of 2023, the Board could have taken alternative steps to challenge the proposed maps many months ago. And if denied, the Board could have appointed an individual to serve in the open seat until the special election. This was never discussed or considered. Why? County leadership did their best to keep this quiet and out of the public's eye. We had no open discussion as a Board, but county management sought informal concurrence resulting in the public notice in the MDJ. The Board has lacked transparency of this entire process, not only within ourselves but with the public as well. The Board of Commissioners is granted limited authority under the Constitution, and the power to enact redistricting remains with the legislators. Too much focus is being placed... Too much focus is being placed on making history instead of addressing the needs of the public. Good policy does not discriminate, and the founders of our Constitution had the foresight and intuition to question if succeeding generations would be up to the task of protecting the liberty they had successfully secured.
Thank you, Commissioner, Commissioner Sheffield.
Thank you, Madam Chair. There's been a lot of conversation around this issue and a lot of comments made, but, you know, I'm really disheartened to hear that our position to stand on the right side of history has been reduced to nothing more than political posturing. That is not the case. I will add that if it were any commissioner on this board, my position would be the same. For me, and I can only speak for myself, this is not about politics. If it were Commissioner Burrow in this position, or Commissioner Gambrell in this position, they would have the same support that I exhibit for Commissioner Richardson. When House Bill 1256 was drawn, it was drawn with minimal impact to each commissioned And each commissioner remained in her district. However, when we talk politics, however, there was opposition to that map in part because of a concern and decrease of party affiliation to the constituents that would have been in that new boundary. That's where the politics come into play if I had to, if I had to determine or pinpoint the politics. Representative Allen's comments were, "When the lines are drawn, politics are not considered." What's considered is a one-on-one representation of the constituents. Representative Allen did not look at the map and say, "Okay, well, you know what? I don't want you to lose the majority of your constituents, because that will jeopardize your reelection." That's not the thought behind, that wasn't his thought behind drawing the lines. On another note, as I listen to the comments here, the previous meeting, emails we received, is difficult for me to discern if there's really truly a concern for the law, or if that is a sentiment that's veiled to attempt at what really lies at the core of concern. There are some among us this evening during public comment has expressed sympathy and support for the Capitol rioters. I am perplexed by the support and the lack of decorum and blatant disrespect to the U.S. Capitol and the rule of law. I am. I'm also appalled that politics are placed above what is right. What we're dealing with tonight in this situation is what is right. It doesn't matter that it's a Democrat, it doesn't matter that it's a Republican. We have a woman that stepped up to the plate and decided to serve her community. I am equally appalled by comments that Commissioner Richardson should just move. I've been around the sun enough times to share that that has a feeling, a historic sentiment, that you don't belong. Go back where you came from. You shouldn't be here. You should have known not to move here. How dare you? How dare you move to the end of your district, a district to which she lives and serves? She has every right to move anywhere within her district. Commissioner Richardson has served the people of District 2. There were, there was a comment made earlier that this map was passed by, by the legislation, by the General Assembly, the majority of which, which I shared in my last comments, have absolutely no understanding of what the residents in District 2, what their needs are, what their concerns are. However, they voted her out of office. Commissioner Richardson is aware of your local concerns. When there was flooding in East Cobb, Commissioner Richardson, not the General Assembly, hosted town halls to hear your concerns and worked towards those solutions. She's here fighting on your behalf, but I'm not hearing that reciprocated by some. So I'm only forced to ask, what's the real issue here? What's the real issue here? Would we receive this opposition if it was District 1 or District 3? I don't know. That remains to be seen. But based on what I hear, based on what I see, based on emails that I receive, I'm hard pressed to believe that we would receive this type of opposition. And with that, I am very appalled.
of your term, you're having to fight for your seat as if you're at the end of your And the question that's being put forward in this agenda item is a novel question of law, and it will be for the courts to decide. What we're doing is unprecedented. I believe that what has occurred here with our commissioner is also unprecedented. No one on this board and no one on any board within any county commission in the state of Georgia should have to experience this. And what is, take, what has taken place not only puts one of our commissioners' districts at risk, but it puts every commissioner's district at risk. There is no one who is free from the potential risk of being drawn out of their seat. So while this could solely be about you, Commissioner Richardson, it's much bigger than that, and it's not about personalizing it for any commissioner, but it's unfortunate for it to be happening to you, which is why I share your name. There were comments made about timing of this. I recall since the top of this year, we've been talking about this openly. This isn't anything new to come before the public. But I can say uniquely, there were comments made, why this board? This board has gone through a lot. This board has gone through three cityhood measures in May. We have another one on the ballot in November, also unprecedented. If there was any concern, it was trying to put this measure forward at the same time of those unprecedented acts. It's amazing how we keep this county going, and it's amazing all the transformative things we've been able to do in spite of all the things we've had to deal with, inclusive of this. I truly appreciate the speakers here today for recognizing the challenges that this board has faced with this item and perhaps some other things that are appalling. We bear with it, we deal with it, and we keep moving, but this is not something that we could move past. We take a lot, but this is not something that we should just take lying down, which is why I'm grateful with the consultation of our attorney, we were able to find some measure of which we can fight for our county. I think as your elected representatives who've been called to serve and also lead, it's not unreasonable for us to fight for the integrity of the vote of our citizens and of the competent, of the ability for this board to retain five board members. Not just a political implication, this impacts our ability to get business done. I don't hear anybody talking about that. This can truly disrupt our ability to conduct business, to operate this county. I feel like when we talk about Commissioner Richardson should move, I feel like this is another one of those things where we blame the victim. You did this. You wanted the attention. Where have we heard that before? You brought this on yourself. You wanted the attention. Any insinuation that Commissioner Richardson should recuse herself should have been brought up when the entire board voted on the maps earlier. There was nobody asking for the commissioners to recuse themselves then. I don't see why we should be recusing ourselves today. There's always so much more to say, but as I've said before, history will judge, and some things don't need to be said. With that, commissioners, I call the question. The vote passes 3-2 with Commissioners Burrow and Gambrell on positions. We are now at the second public comment of our meeting.
The first speaker is Christine Rosman.
Okay, I guess I'm not going to speak as long as I was, but I would like to say that this was never, ever a personal thing. You've done a tremendous job. You've done a tremendous job, Commissioner Richardson, my name is Christine Rosman, with representing your constituents. So that was never it. It was about following the rule of law. And so this is setting a precedence of like, kind of, well, I don't want to say giving a whatever, but it's, it's setting a precedence that you're beyond the law. It's also, it's going to cost the taxpayers, what, how much? Half a million to, to get this going? To, to either fight it or, you know, do another special election? So again, it's spending taxpayer money, and it's like, oh, it's all about us. And I can tell you that the, the way in which, I mean, we listened to some other things tonight about, oh, there's going to be another contract, another consulting contract for a million dollars for, and that's just the plan. That's not even the installation. And so you, you'd like throw money out like it's Halloween candy or something. And it is so insulting to us that we never have a, well, I shouldn't say we never have a voice. We do have a voice. There are two commissioners that listen to us. And, but the thing is, is that, and then, and then I know I'll get scolded after this, so we, we get, we have that going on too. But anyway.
Please, please, please let her complete her remarks without interruption, please. There are more people out here today, so I can't call out anybody, because I don't know who's doing this. Please, just respect the decorum of this room. Go ahead.
Also wanted to talk about going to the Power of One Cobb. Attended that, and that was, I just wanted to see what, what is being presented to Cobb County. And I swear, I have no problems with people whatsoever, and I don't think many, many people don't. Most don't. In Cobb County, there aren't problems. And then we go to these meetings and talk about, oh, diversity, equity, and inclusion, and it's so divisive. It's so, okay, where do the blacks live? Where do the Asians live? Where, and it, and it is pulling us all apart. I don't know if anybody saw that, that interview with the, I don't even know, I don't follow football, but it was a football coach. And, and the reporter, oh, what's it going to be like being up against another black football coach, NFL? And he's like, oh, we don't really look at each other's color, we just kind of look at how each other, you know, coaches. And, and then another reporter comes in, but, but they're, they're trying to egg it on, and it's like, no, there isn't a problem. You guys are making a problem, we don't have a problem with it. And I frankly feel that that's what it is in Cobb County, that there's not nearly the problem that you make it sound like that there is. And I feel sorry for this county, because we're, it's like we're pitting each other against one another, but we don't really have that issue. But you make it sound like we have that issue. And I said it last time, too, is that it's interesting, the same speak, the same speak that I heard at the One Cobb, you know, again, diversity, equity, inclusion, and how does that make you feel? And did you feel excluded? And, and, and there were a couple of ladies at our table that were, had horrible, horrible experiences with whites, and they let us know about it. And it was like, I, I am so sorry, you know? And, and I've had my experiences too, where I have been the victim of prejudice because being white. So I don't, I, we're, it's, it's an interesting time that we are in. I'm deeply saddened that-
Ms. Rosman, sorry, your time's up.
Thank you.
The next speaker is William Parker.
Thank you, and good evening, commissioners. My name's William Parker.
My name's William Parker. I'm a 40-year resident of Cobb County, and for all that time, I've lived in District Two. Moved around a bit, but still in District Two. I have voted in every single election held wherever I have lived since I was 18 years old, and that was a long time ago. And it wasn't until I moved to Cobb County that I had the experience of never voting for a winning candidate for any office on the ballot unless I chose to vote for a person who was running unopposed. That changed in 2020, when I voted for the current District Two Commissioner. So you can imagine my chagrin when I discovered that the state legislature of Georgia had arbitrarily decided that it didn't matter how I voted. Now, I recently watched the video of the legislative hearing on the subject of redistricting, the Cobb County Commission and the school board districts. And I observed one of the speakers saying that she approved of the legislative map presented because she didn't feel represented by the current commission. Really. Go figure. Well, I'm here to ask today, to ask all of you, unfortunately you did, some of you did, even if you no longer wish to be confused by facts, which many people apparently are not, to support Act 562 and reclaim the authority of the county commission and its elective representatives to determine how the district lines will be drawn and allow the majority of voters in a particular district to determine who will represent them in the various governing bodies of this county. I feel that it's a travesty and almost inhumane to have a disgruntled legislator or group of legislators of whatever stripe decide to nullify the votes and desires of over 50,000 people because his or her side didn't win a properly conducted and duly certified election. And I suggest that every citizen and representative of this county, state, and nation heed the admonition of the famous author James Baldwin, who said that life is like a water wheel. Don't be so heady when you're on top that you cannot hold your breath when you're on the bottom. Folks, the universe cannot and will not tolerate an imbalance. I remember that, I guess I'll call him a steen, gentleman Trent Lott, Senator from the state of Mississippi, who said one time, because I've heard a lot of people tonight talk about the law, and what the law is and how we should obey the law. Senator Lott, at the time, I think, was the majority leader of the Senate, and said the law is whatever we decide it's going to be. Okay? And if we don't like it, we can change it. And that's what I'm suggesting needs to happen now. Another speaker earlier presented a video talking about the historical position of Democrats in this society. Absolutely right. Everything the lady said in that presentation was correct. Now, I'm a professional historian by training, I studied that in college. I know all of the stuff that she talked about. Republicans were in control in the 1840s till actually 1964, I think, when the Civil Rights Act passed. My grandfather was a Republican, my father was a Republican. Lyndon Johnson was the first president of the United States that I voted for. I was 18 years old. Tell you about how old I am, if y'all are trying to figure it out. I've been around a long time. I even served on his inaugural committee. So, and when Johnson passed the Civil Rights Act in 1964, 1965, he poignantly said that we have lost the South for the next two generations. He was right. Every Democrat, Southern Democrat at that time, became a Republican. So it's disingenuous for someone to say today that Democrats did all, of course, they did it. Back then, Democrats were as racist then as Republicans are now. Okay? But they all switched over, they switched sides when the Civil Rights Act of 1965 was passed. And they became, all the Democrats became Republicans. So to go back historically and say that Democrats.
Mr. Parker, sorry, your time is up.
Thank you.
Good evening. Good evening, Chairwoman and Commissioners and the other staff that is here this evening. My name is Mindy Seager, and I'm a current District Two resident. I wanted to talk to you all tonight about a word that we haven't heard yet, and that word is root. There are two definitions to that word. One is the part of a plant which attaches to the ground or to a support, and the other is the basic cause, is the basic cause, source, or origin of something. We're going to come back to that. Commissioner Richardson and I happened to have moved here in the same year, in 2005. And though the universe didn't see fit that we didn't meet until a few, quite a few years later, we've made connections, each of us, in our own ways, in that time, and are proud citizens of Cobb County. Many of Commissioner Richardson's connections have already been heard tonight. And the connections that I have made in Cobb County center largely around community engagement and the defense of free and fair elections. Many of the friends, many of those friends are here tonight in the audience at my request and in support of the board exercising home rule, and I'm thankful to them. My understanding is that a number of solutions were evaluated before arriving at this moment. The chaos that would have ensued of two sitting commissioners that to, to have run against each other would have caused more chaos in this county at a time when we were fighting cityhood and all the other things that were happening this spring. It didn't solve the problem that District Two would have been vacated and a special election thrown into that chaotic mix. The absurd suggestion of just move would only have fixed one point in the issue, and only if and only if the commissioner moved into the overlap of the two maps. And if you've looked at them comparatively, it literally is pancake flipped, and that area is very small. What it wouldn't have addressed is that the fact that the state could redistrict again and again and again during every single session, and that is the precedent that the state has set forth to, to have, that any commissioner on this board or any other board of Georgia's 159 counties could be at risk of any legislature that wishes to push through a general bill with the support of having the majority of the state. And as we all know, the majorities can change. That, I think, is a warning to us all. The second definition of root is the basic cause or source of origin of something. Since the announcement of House Bill 1154 and the related drawing out of the District Two Commissioner, many have asked, why has this happened? While I do not pretend to know what is in the hearts and minds of others, I do understand the reality should the state's actions stand. The will of the majority of District Two voters in 2020 duly elected a commissioner to a four-year term, something each of you deserve to complete, each of you. And I would defend that for each of you. Those in, those in the state's new District Two stand not to be represented until such time a special election would be held. This is some 200,000 people, a bulk of the, of the CID, the Cumberland Improvement District, a large swath of the cities of Smyrna and Marietta. That is not where I think we want our county to go. We are talking about the economic epicenter of our county. What the majority of this board has solidified in tonight's final vote is that our county is strong and is willing to utilize the state constitutional power of home rule. My hope is that this action stands and an important check and balance will exist between counties, all counties, and our state forevermore.
House Bill 1154 was an obvi, I'm sorry, my name is Caroline Holka. I currently reside in District Three, and where I reside is going to be District Three no matter what the map says. So that is my perspective. House Bill 1154 was an obvious and grotesque partisan attempt to deny the nature of the reality that Cobb County currently operates on a narrow Democratic margin. Those are facts. It doesn't matter where within Cobb County Commissioner Richardson would move if she chose to exercise the just move option. It does not change the fact that our legislative delegation and our Board of Commissioners has a Democratic majority. Shenanigans with the school board maps on the side, that is a whole separate issue. The reality is, the demographics of Cobb County are changing. Just in the time that I have moved here, we have seen a consistent Democratic shift. We went from people, 30% of county, of District Six residents voted for Rodney Sooksberry, which no one has ever even seen a picture of him. So there have always been some number of Democratic citizens in Cobb County. The normal process is to have the counties make their maps, and the legislature just rubber stamps them and submits them with their own. That is the process that was set up in the original bill for maps, and I will never understand how it went so sideways. The individuals who sponsored House Bill 1154 largely do not even live in the districts that are affected. However, they are Republicans and looking to hold their grasp on the county by any means necessary. Thank you so much for standing against this, and I appreciate your representation, and I appreciate all of the work that you do. And while I personally, like Commissioner Gamble, wish that this issue had come before the board earlier, when we would have had the gift of time to really think about the consequences, the circumstances just did not allow it. Also, thank you, Commissioner Cupid, for keeping us in line. It is very easy to get rowdy when you feel strongly about something. So thank you for being a better person than I am, and that's why you're the chair.
Chairwoman Cupid, valued Commissioners, Dr. McMorris, and everybody, hey. So I'm a registered nurse, not a business person, not a lawyer, not CPA. So as always.
Please help us in stating your name for the record.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Donna Court.
Thank you.
I live in District Two. I am, full disclosure, I am on Commissioner Richardson's ad board. So I'm harkening back and I am amending a little bit what I wanted to say back to the head, the heart, and the hands that I talked about last time. You all were kind enough to let me speak to you. And you all are the wealth of knowledge and experience and expertise. And yes, experience and expertise are two different things. You are more educated on home rule, law, precedent, and fair business acumen than any of us constituents could ever hope to be. We are blessed to have you represent us. There is nothing from the practical point or legal point that I could tell you that you do not already know, because you know, and because you know, your heads must also tell you that this is a matter of color. No, not blue and red, not black and white. What I see is a matter of green. And I'm borrowing that from a dear friend of mine, she knows who she is. The matter of color is green. Green, green, the color of money. It has been said, follow the money and see where it goes. I propose to you that there are forces, I don't know about them, you all may, there's more to this than meets the eye, but what I do see here is that your head will tell you it's no coincidence that HB 1154, that's the bad one, I, I had to learn to memorize that, that actually split the CID, the Cumberland Improvement District, into two of your, or would have split into two of your districts. And I have learned enough, again, I'm out of my comfort zone, not a business realtor, nurse, 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 that land and zoning equal money. I'm sure you know there are other examples, and you know those more than I do. The second thing is your heart. With your hearts, I have seen you all be courageous. You will have to continue to be courageous no matter how you voted tonight. And yes, the French word, it is a French word, courage, means heart, and the strength you show today will be remembered. Everyone expected the Commissioners to vote a certain way. I was hoping that they would be wrong. They, the outside them, but I promise you, I promise you, you will be remembered. Your hands, you have been together, you have linked arms, you have held shovels, you have burned the midnight oil. To paraphrase what Commissioner Burl has previously said in, in written statements, you may not always agree, but you do work together, heads, hearts, and hands. Expect the best, Cobb County, we know that you guys are the best. Please continue to be who you are, women of strength, women of character, women of service, women of honor. And as the French would say, bon courage, it means to go well and be safe, and I thank you kindly for your time.
I'm Charmin Southall, and I'm a resident of Cobb County for 35 years and a resident currently of District Two. I realized this week that this is my 50th anniversary of voting, and with 34 of those years in Cobb County, I've voted for winners, losers, folks that ultimately resigned. I don't think I've ever voted for anybody who died, but I have never have I voted for or against anyone whose term was cut short by legislative action. In my 50 years of voting, I've learned two things. Well, probably more than that, but first, all legislative bodies act in a partisan manner. It's what they do. They will act in a way that benefits a majority party. And I've got a pro tip for y'all, and you probably already know this, but as a voter, what we really like to see is to put that partisanship down when you get ready to do the job. Campaigning's fine, I love it personally, but we just want folks to work together. And I think by and large, this group does. The second thing that I've learned is that the majority party will change over time. When I first began to vote, it was sort of one of those cusp moments leading into the Nixon years. Citizens change their views, they evolve, demographics shift, external forces push us in a different direction. And I believe these changes are good, and eventually will slowly move us toward a more, more perfect union, if we retain fairness, local focus, and apply laws uniformly. The recent erosion of power from local office holders to the State General Assembly has concerned me for a while before this incident. We've seen this trend impact our elections, our school system, and now a duly elected county official. I appreciate the awkward position this puts the Board of Commissioners in. You are elected bearing certain party affiliation but are asked to challenge a situation that just isn't fair and might disappoint your party leadership. Democracy is hard and it's messy, but I was going to ask you to look at the situation as if you were being removed from office, see that unfairness and overreach, and vote in the direction that best serves all the members of, of our community. And I believe you've done that. Thank you for your time.
Chairwoman, that concludes the second portion of the public comment.
Thank you, Bill. We are now moving on to our appointments tab. We have three appointments. The first two, I believe, are from The first two, I believe, are from Commissioner District 4, and they are announcements. Please.
Okay. I'd like to announce the reappointment of David Harris to the Neighborhood Safety Commission for a three-year term to expire on September 30, 2025.
Okay.
And just go on with the next one.
Yes, go to the next one, thank you.
To announce the reappointment of Cynthia Edwards to the Neighborhood Safety Commission to a three-year term to expire on September 30, 2025.
Thank you, Commissioner. And our next one is from Commissioner Burl.
Yes, I would like to announce the appointment of Thomas Shibley to the Transit Advisory Board, and he will replace David Person. And I'd like to say that he attended the meeting last night unofficially, and I've already gotten good reviews, and so I look forward to Matt helping him out. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Commissioner. We are now to the final tab of our meeting, is the Commissioners' Public Address. We will begin with Commissioner Gambrell once the PowerPoint is queued up.
Thank you. Come experience the library in the dark at a teen lock-in. This is going to be held at the North Cobb Regional Library, which is located at 3535 Old Highway 41 in Kennesaw from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. on Friday, October 28. Come ready to play games in the dark, eat pizza, compete in a costume contest, make glow-in-the-dark art, and lots more. This event is for ages 13 to 18. Dress-up-for-Halloween tennis event for kids is going to be courtesy of our Cobb County Parks and the Atlanta Youth Tennis and Education Foundation from 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. on Friday, October 28, for a free Halloween-themed tennis event at our Fair Oaks Tennis Center. This is located at 1460 West Booth Road Extension in Marietta. This event is for children ages 5 to 13. No equipment or experience is necessary. Wear your costumes and enjoy tennis games, pizza, and hit for prizes. Our Cobb Parks Fall Festival is in the books for 2022. Last Saturday, we had around 2,500 cars come through in five hours with an estimated 8,750 participants. I know Commissioner Richardson showed up in costume, as did I.
We have picture proof.
We do.
And splash.
And splash. We handed out around 4,000 goodie bags. Our parks staff worked for a year preparing for this event with all the building, ordering, and planning that took place. Friday, our staff stayed until 2:00 in the morning to prepare for this event and came back at 10:00 the next day. Our parks staff was also there till after 12:30 on Saturday, disassembling everything. More importantly, it took folks from all over the Parks Department to make this happen, from recreation arts programming to operations and maintenance. It is genuinely a department-wide effort. Parks could not have done this without the support of our county departments that included public safety, our rangers, fire, and police. Safe Kids Cobb, Library, Senior Services, DOT, and the District Attorney's Office, along with our Board of Commissioners staff and admins who participated. So again, thank you for all who put on this event for our community. This year's Great Pumpkin Decorating Contest, the winner is... The votes and donations are in for the Great Pumpkin Decorating Contest, and, drumroll, pumpkin number seven, The Corpse Bride by our Cobb Library, was the first-place winner. It raised over $346 for Safe Path. The runner-up was pumpkin number three, which is The Holidays by Cobb Senior Services. And third was pumpkin number two, Pennywise from the IT Movie by Cobb County DOT came in third. Congratulations to all the entries, and a special thank you to all of the departments who created pumpkins to help raise over $855 for Safe Path, the children's advocacy center that hopes for a community free of child abuse. Awards will be given out at our November 17 BOC meeting at 7:00 p.m. with the winning departments, Still Family Farms, and Safe Path Together. Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner. Commissioner Richardson?
All right. Oh, we've got the orange theme, it looks really cute. Thank you, Leah. Happy Halloween, everyone. So, updates from the office. So this first thing here was an incredibly emotional event that we had, or that we were part of. It was the Veterans Pod mural unveiling. So just to let you all know, this was a project a long time coming, and Chairwoman was there as well. But it originated, or at least a combination of participants came to the table here between our accountability courts, the Sheriff's Office, Dan Heidrich, who is my Veterans Affairs seat on the Community Cabinet, has been very involved in something for years that he's been wanting to see, but a separate Veterans Pod within our jail, our adult detention center, in order to make sure that we can streamline access to resources, alternative opportunities for those that are imprisoned. And this was very emotional, not just for us, but also for the inmates in that pod. The mural was the last piece, and we found Tavani, as you can see in this lower picture, and the inmates are actually giving her a card because she painted that mural in the jail. And they were, it was just, it was all very emotional. But a really great opportunity for us to make sure that those that have served us know that we're also fighting for them to get back into the community. Lower Roswell Road Project, this is something of incredible interest, really excited to share some of the updates with regards to this project. We've had several town halls on this, gotten a lot of feedback, and I think that we've struck a good balance of what's to come. So that project follow-up will be at East Cobb Library this coming Thursday from 6:00 to 7:00. Hopefully, I spoke long enough for you to take a picture of the QR code if you're interested in attending. And yeah, just please submit your RCP. The District 2 Quarterly Town Hall and Listening Session. So November 10, as you know, we do our quarterly town halls with all of staff and community awards, and it's just a really great old time. We have our next one coming up, November 10, at the Boy Scouts of America Atlanta Area Council. And we are also incorporating the Strategic Plan Listening Session as a part of that town hall. So you can attend that listening session and then be there for when the town hall begins. But even if you aren't able to get there at 5:30, we know traffic is a big thing, they will still be around to collect additional information from you, your insight cards, et cetera. Please come to the town hall. From the community, so the community group for the Powers Ferry Corridor has openings on its Board of Directors. The PFCA is a nonpartisan nonprofit group composed of individuals, HOAs, and business people. They work together to promote quality, growth, and revitalization, support their local public schools, and help the community's overall economic vibrancy. As a PFCA Board Member, you'd be a part of the team leading these efforts, and the Board meets every month at 6:30 p.m. on the second Wednesday. Board members live, work, or own a business in the corridor defined by Powers Ferry Road and include parts of Terrell Mill, Wendy Hill, Wildwood Parkway, and Wendy Ridge Parkway. More on the specific area can be found on the PFCA website on the QR code. If you're interested in being considered for the Board position, please email Patty Rice by October 31st. And just something to note, this is one of our civic associations, we have several throughout the district. If you're interested and want to get involved in how zoning cases get decided, some of the negotiations, help pull those levers, definitely get involved in those civic associations as they work very diligently on many of those cases. And that concludes all of my updates.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Burl.
Thank you. This morning, we celebrated 25 years of the Town Center CID, and I appreciate the Chairwoman and Commissioner Sheffield being there and County Manager. During the celebration, there were three awards given out, and they were a surprise. Andy Eichenblatt, the owner of Print Graphics, received the Commercial Champion Award. Jim Croy of Croy Engineering received the Community Champion Award. And I was very surprised to receive the Town Center Champion Award. Throughout my tenure, I have seen many changes in the Town Center area and am proud to have been a part of growing this part of the county. Early voting's underway, and there's no line at the Tim DeLeey Senior Center. In and out, five minutes today. So, but there's several locations, there's flyers in the back to give you the times and locations. So get your vote in early. On Thursday, this Thursday, from 9:00 to 1:00, at the Cobb Senior Wellness Center at 1150 Powder Springs Street, the Cobb County Veterans Outreach, in conjunction with the U.S. Department of Veterans Administration, is holding a Claims Clinic to assist with claims and benefits for our veterans. And there will be VA representatives on-site to answer questions, check claim status, and file claims. So all veterans can get some service there, 9:00 to 1:00 this Thursday. The McCleskey East Cobb Family Y invites you to dress in your favorite costume and join them for a spooky fun Spooktacular from 6:00 to 8:00 this Friday, October 28. The McCleskey YMCA is located at 1055 East Piedmont Road in Marietta. There will be carnival games, crafts, trunk-or-treat, and a costume parade and contest. It is a free event for members and the community. For more information, you can contact Lynda P. at YMCAAtlanta.org, or Fallon J. at YMCAAtlanta.org. On November 5, from 11:00 to 3:00, at East Cobb Park, 3322 Russell Road, United Military Care invites you to attend their annual Give Thanks for All Who Serve picnic. And this is free, and a free event, and it does include food, live music, entertainment, and more. For more information, you can visit UnitedMilitaryCare.org. On November 15, from 6:00 to 7:30, at the Mountain View Community Center, I'll be hosting the Five-Year Strategic Plan for District 3 Community Listening Session. Along with our strategic planning partner Accenture, we will be holding the community listening sessions to inform about the ongoing development of the countywide comprehensive five-year strategic plan. This is an opportunity for all community members to impact the future of the county through sharing experiences, insights, and aspirations with district and county leadership. So please join us November 15, from 6:00 to 7:30, at the Mountain View Community Center, 3400 Sandy Plains Road. And to stay updated on events and zonings and things in the community, please visit my website at CobbCounty.org/burl, and email me or my assistant for more information. Thank you. And happy Halloween.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Sheffield?
Thank you, Madam Chair. District 4 News and Updates. Congratulations to the SAE School for its 10th-year school anniversary and unveiling of its blue-top basketball court and new soccer field. The school's co-founder conducted an experiment by painting a parking spot with a special reflective coating and found that the area was 12 degrees cooler than the black asphalt. The coating reflects ultraviolet and infrared waves and also reflects heat without glare. The SAE School received a grant from the Atlanta United Soccer Team to help fund the school's new soccer field. The grant was secured in part by a community letter of support from me and also the Mableton Improvement Coalition. District 4's monthly In-the-Zone Meeting will be tomorrow, October 26, at 7:00 p.m. Planning Commissioner Michael Hughes and I will discuss November zoning cases and recap October's BOC zoning decisions. There are five new cases for November and 10 continued cases to be heard. Our monthly In-the-Zone Meetings are a great way to learn firsthand about zoning applications and potential development in our community. Please email didra.watts@cobbcounty.org for the meeting link. It is my hope that you will be able to join us. Join me, Cobb Police, Cobb EMC, Cobb Fire, and the Neighborhood Safety Commission on Saturday, October 29, from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., Fall Second Annual Osborne Trunk-or-Treat Community Event. The Legacy at West Cobb Apartments, local organizations, and vendors will provide hot dogs, drinks, trunk-or-treat candy, and tons of fun. Face painting, games, and additional activities will be available for families to enjoy. Must Ministries will have their mobile food pantry on-site to distribute produce bags to families. Cobb Fire and Police will have their cool vehicles at the event for kids to explore. Our annual event will be held at the Cobb Innovation and Tech Academy, OCDA, Park-In-Lot located at 114 Wendy Hill Road in Marietta. Hope Family Resource Center is seeking support in providing families with Thanksgiving dinner. Nonperishable food items are being accepted now until November 11. Items can be dropped off at the nonprofit's office located at 6108 Mableton Parkway, Suite 116 in Mableton. For questions concerning the type of items accepted, email home, I'm sorry, hopefamilyresources@gmail.com or call 678-310-0525. And finally, Cobb County Government is, in partnership with Accenture, will conduct a community listening session and share information regarding the ongoing development of the countywide comprehensive five-year strategic plan. This is an opportunity for all community members to impact the future of the county through sharing experiences, insights, and aspirations with district and county leadership. The District 4 meeting will be held on November 16, from 6:30 to 8:00 p.m. at the Cobb Police Training Academy located at 2435 East-West Connector in Austell. Thank you.
Certainly, over the past weekend, there were some people having fun whose offices reside on the third floor. They are in costume and shall remain unnamed. There might be an award for who can figure them out.
Oh, it is mortified.
We can go to the next one. As Commissioner Richardson shared, the Sheriff's Office had a great program over the past week, inclusive of graduates of its Job Readiness Program. And the men and the lady that you see pictured at the bottom right, they were the first 11 graduates of the program. The two graduates to the right both received vehicles to help overcome the impediment of transportation when it comes to working. And pictured above is the mural that was painted in the jail, and it was beautiful, and the remarks about the different elements of the mural were shared, and it just lets you know how much thoughtfulness people who are artists put into their work. Over this weekend, we celebrated the work that has been done by the men of Omega Sci-Fi here in Cobb County and their beautification of Wallace Park. And they have not mentioned the word adoption, but I perceive with their commitment that we can consider them as adopters of that park, and they're truly making a difference to help keep it up in good shape. Had a unique experience, I don't know if it was last week, time is a... Had a unique experience, I don't know if it was last week, time is a blur, to go to the White House and to share the practical impact that White House policies are having in local government. The picture to the top right is in the West Wing, and the picture in the bottom is the Eisenhower Room of the White House. The picture to the left, though, was one that gives me a lot of hope. It was part of a youth event where youth are getting very involved in addressing issues across metro Atlanta, and this is one of our former school counselors here who received an award at that event for her advocacy in equity. Congratulations to our new KSU president, who's our sixth president, Dr. Kathy Schwag, and had opportunity to attend her investiture ceremony, and just wish her the best in her leadership of the university. Though we would have loved for the Braves to bring in, you know, another championship, I was grateful to be able to share a night out at the game with two of my fellow commissioners here, Commissioner Burl and Commissioner Sheffield.
Next year.
Early voting is underway, and you haven't seen the power of your vote, you've witnessed it today. Elections matter. Elections truly matter, and hope that if you have not been persuaded to go to the polls, that you will be. Encourage those around you, if they are voting age, to please get out and vote. Every vote counts. Every election counts. With that, thank you. I appreciate all of you who stayed to the bitter end. I'm sitting here just full because we've discussed some very heavy matters today, and you know, when heavy things in life occur, there's always this perhaps somewhat painful and maybe somewhat relieving reality that life moves on. And you know, after we had that very heavy vote, we went right into public comment and into our slides of things that are going on. The business of the county will continue to move forward, but it is done, again, often with a lot of heavy things that come before us in the county. I appreciate that those up here did not have to and do not have to shoulder these things alone. So again, thank you for those who took part in our meeting today. Please continue to take part in our meetings. We meet every second and fourth Tuesday, every fourth Tuesday's at 7:00 PM, and our doors are open. With that, everyone, have a good evening. Thank you.